On the clock, I will call the meeting of the Select Board back into open session after our executive session. Note, this meeting is being televised streamed or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge it at this time. Use of flash photography during Select Board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the conference line 1-929-205-6099. The Zoom meeting ID is 86957755505. The password is all uppercase, B-O-U-R-N-E. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must read the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. If you are on the telephone, use star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and then, and again, star six to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. I will recognize Peter Meyer for item number one.
Good evening. I guess why I have a moment of silence for former Congressman Bill Hotel Hunt, passed away last Saturday. He did a lot for our community when he was in office, and I know firsthand because I helped him with some of those items. So, thanks for him, and I guess we keep in your thoughts.
And for, we will have a moment of silence for Bill Hotel Hunt and to recognize our troops and public safety personnel. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next item is reading of the Select Board mission and mission statements.
It's Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces excellent education and offers to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
Thank you. And the mission?
Let me pull it up, and maybe I can get it. It's in front of me. Well, I don't have it in front of me. Sorry.
I have it.
There you go. I'll let you go.
Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Thank you. Next item is report out on executive session. We did have a meeting, an executive session, to discuss a purchase of the county land. We did not take any formal votes in that session. Next is a new item for our agenda, which is community shout-out and recognition. This is the first time, so we're, however, I have a long list. So I have a community shout-out to Shelby Lynn Palmer for organizing the Second Annual Easter Egg Hunt with 14,000 eggs and 72 different character decorations throughout the town of Bourne. It was enjoyed by all. Also have a community shout-out from Bourne Youth Baseball to our DPW for an awesome job prepping the baseball fields for the spring season. Then I have congratulations and recognition to the Bourne High School Boys Basketball Team that was seeded second in Division Four. They won the final four round and made it to the state finals where they faced top seed Wareham but lost in a hard-fought game. Also, the girls' Bourne High School Basketball Team that was seeded seventh in Division Four, they played two playoff rounds but were defeated by Tingsborough in the round of eight. Also, the Sandwich Bourne Girls Ice Hockey Division Two Co-op that won the first playoff round but then fell to Nosett in the second round. And the Division Four Boys Hockey Team that won the first round but were defeated by Dan Tuckett in a way game on the island. So, great job by our Bourne High School Winter Sports Teams. Also, congratulations to Paige Mida and Mikey Dankert for each reaching 1,000 career points in basketball. Also, congratulations to the Newborn High School DECA Chapter that celebrated a successful first-state career development conference where seven student members competed among thousands of peers. Dion Patel scored in the top three of the Marketing Cluster Written Exam, and Sophia Halunen and Lily Russell's team earned gold in DECA's Quiz Bowl and qualified for the International Career Development Conference in California in April. Congratulations to Bourne Middle School Student Audrey Anna Morse, who was awarded Artsonia's Artist of the Week Award in February. And congratulations to the Bourne High School Drama Club, who made it to the semifinal round in the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Competition. The Drama Club received five awards for their production of Macbeth during the preliminary round, so, great job by Bourne residents. Does anyone else have something for community recognition or shout-out?
Yes, I do, real quickly. I'd like to acknowledge our Assistant Town Administrator, Liz Harts Grove. Today, her and I sat on a panel for the Shape the Cape Summit that was sponsored by the Cape Cod Young Professionals. It was really great to have two people from Bourne representing our town. And I also want to make sure I shout-out to Emma Buzznengo. It was really amazing to see our young people sitting in the audience for the Cape Cod Young Professionals, so that's my shout-out. Thank you.
MJ.
Yes.
Also, to our town itself, if you read the town seal, we're 140 years old today.
Oh, I forgot that. Yes, it's our 140th birthday today.
So, I mean, we're, it seems old, but it's young in community date standards, so, but we're 140 years strong, and we'll keep on moving along.
Great, thank you.
And if there was any other students from Bourne at the Shape the Cape Summit, and I missed you, I'm sorry. I only knew, I only recognized Emma, just in case.
Okay. Next is public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are allowed for up to a total of 12 minutes at the beginning of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment. Board members are unable to respond due to posting requirements of the open meeting laws. Anyone here for public comment or on Zoom? Seeing none.
Katie Matthews has a hand up.
Who has a hand up?
Katie Matthews.
That's a cursor.
Oh. Oh, it's usually yellow. You can change the color of it.
Is that better?
There you go.
All right. So, seeing none. Moving right along here. Next item on the agenda is the Town Administrator Annual Review Summary, which I will read. It has been distributed to the Select Board this evening and will be available on the town website tomorrow morning. Each year, the Town, the Select Board shall conduct a formal performance evaluation of the Town Administrator as outlined in her contract. This is a summary of the Town Administrator Marlene McCollum's second-year evaluation from February 2023 to February 2024. The six evaluation areas are summarized below with a summary of comments provided. Overall, Town Administrator Marlene McCollum scored 3.14 out of a possible 4.0, which falls in the category of strong performance. Below, please find a breakdown and summary of each of the evaluation areas. Board Support and Relations: Score 3.25 out of 4.0, strong performance. Board Members Complimented Marlene's ability to communicate with the entire board and her continuing efforts to keep them informed. She is prepared for meetings, open to conversations, and available to have discussions with individual board members. She has been responsive when questions or concerns arise or when additional information is needed for decision-making. Meeting materials are distributed in a timely manner. The continued improvement of communication between the board, the town administrator, and the chair will help maintain and build a climate of mutual respect and trust. Financial Management: Score 3.57 out of 4.0, outstanding. Marlene works well with her finance team. Budget, debt relief, capital projects, and financial strategy are strengths for Marlene. Board Members were pleased with the budget process that has been implemented. Capital Projects have been a challenge for many years, and there are multiple competing priorities. But the board recognizes that progress has been made, and ongoing discussion and implementation of a prioritization plan would help Marlene in this area. It was suggested that a review of a long-term financial plan would be helpful so the board can have a clearer understanding of the long-term implications of decisions. Personnel Management: Organizational Leadership: Score 2.72 out of 4.0, strong performance. Board Members found this area difficult to score as they do not get involved in the day-to-day operations, nor do they have the ability to speak with staff. Board Members overall get the sense that Marlene communicates well with her immediate staff and department heads, but they would like to see more staff engagement. There were concerns expressed about resignations and terminations, but board members are aware that they are not privy to all the details. When it comes to handling these issues and decisions, Marlene handles them well with the public, the news outlets, and the board. Board Members hope that Marlene's self-reflection will help her strive to improve and gain confidence in her management style and continue to find ways to promote a positive work environment. Suggestions for improvement include more networking outside of town staff and finding a mentor in a more experienced manager, someone who has experience dealing with personnel issues. Community Leadership: Public Relations: Score 2.91 out of 4, strong performance. Board Members stated that Marlene is respectful and professional in her dealings with the public in meetings as a representative of the town. Having the Town Administrator Reports posted on the website helps keep residents informed. It was suggested that the Town Administrator and the Select Board should focus some energy on creating new avenues to community engagement, including weekly briefings, social media, meetings with legislators, and an improved website would be helpful. It was suggested that attendance at more events would allow people to connect with and appreciate her. Town Operations Infrastructure: Score 3.3 out of 4.0, strong performance. Marlene is a productive manager who has a solid understanding of the charter, operations, and delivery of services. Marlene has made significant progress on the goals set by the board. She does well prioritizing problems and finding solutions. Marlene is proactive in keeping the board informed. She has demonstrated leadership in regards to planning, infrastructure, and implementing policy. Personal, Professional, Individual Qualities and Professional Skills and Status: Score 3.06 out of 4.0, strong performance. Marlene demonstrates strong management and leadership qualities while being a dedicated professional. She is deeply committed to her roles and responsibilities. The board is aware of the challenging personnel issues that Marlene has faced and the toll it has taken on Marlene. They encourage her to continue to reflect on her actions, decision-making, problem-solving, and conflict resolution skills to continuously improve. Marlene's resilience and willingness to keep trying in the face of adversity is commendable. Board Members continue, Board Members encourage Marlene to continue to build on her strengths and to know when to ask for help. Marlene has done an excellent job and is able to resolve issues while maintaining the delicate balance of administrative ease, productivity, and community satisfaction. Thank you for your job well done. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the presentation by Chief Cody on the Safer Grant Program for the Fire Department.
It's a short PowerPoint. It's only about 10 slides. I'm going to give a full night of having to use, so I will. Okay, so tonight, we're here to talk about the 2023 Safer Grant. For those of you that aren't aware of it, it stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. Okay, what we're going to talk to you about tonight is what the Safer Grant is. We're going to talk a little bit about past staffing versus the present staffing, what if we're awarded this grant, what it'll provide, and how it'll improve the emergency services in town. I'm going to tell you what it won't provide, and you'll get a chance to ask any questions. So, the Safer Grant is, it's put out by FEMA once a year. This year, there's $324 million available to fire departments. The goal of it is to basically help fire departments meet industry standards, meet NFPA standards, and to make the community safer, to sum it up. So, Safer Grant just opened, I know Marlene talked to you about this, I believe, last week or two weeks ago. Short window of period, I don't know why it's FY23 Safer Grant, we're not FY24, but this is how it runs. Just opened March, in March, and it closes April 12th, so we have to, we're moving on this now. Assistant Chief Pelonsi does a lot of my grant management. He's applying for it now, whether or not we get awarded. We are in the process of applying for it. So, just before I get, talking about staffing, what I'm looking for for the Safer Grant is to have a total of four people, one per shift. I'll get into you, I'll talk about that a little bit later, how that will happen, what that'll do for Manning. It's a three-year grant period, includes, that does not include a 180-day recruitment period, so once, if we get awarded the grant, we have 180 days to recruit people, the three-year period starts after that. Moving on. The eligible expenses under Safer, it's basically salary and all associated benefits. There's no manager administration costs with it. There could be some additional expenses, but we can absorb them to our budgets if it comes to PPE. I've looked at that, I know Marlene, we talked about that last week, we'll be able to cover Again, one thing, and Madam Chair, we talked about this earlier, this is new for this year again, we were awarded the Safer Grant twice in the past, and they've got a graduated payment plan. This one, there's no cost to the town for three years, for any personnel costs, for the entire three years. So this is where I want you to pay attention, if you can read it, this might be easier if you can read the papers. We were awarded the Safer Grant in 2011 and 2014. In 2011, the award brought our personnel from 36 full-time operation personnel to 44. At that time, we only did 3,731 emergency calls that year. 2014, we were awarded the grant again. We were able to maintain the 44 personnel. Our calling volume increased to 4,201 emergency incidents. In 2017, the grant ended. We lost four personnel. We funded four of them, so our personnel dropped to 40 operational personnel. At that time, our call volume grew to 4,510 emergency incidents. Going to the next page, where we are now, we're still at 40 operational personnel. We did 5,127 calls last year. It's a 38% increase in our call volume from when we were first awarded the grant. Federal grant, the federal government believed we needed personnel back then, and our call numbers are only showing that we need it now. So just, I know a lot of you are familiar with it, by minimum daily staffing. We have 10 people on duty. If we're fully staffed, on a day-to-day basis, we run a nine-person minimum, so each of our stations, Sagamore, I'm sorry, sorry to read.
They can't hear.
The Sagamore, the Buzzards Bay Station, on a day-to-day basis, at a minimum, is staffed with one lieutenant, two firefighters. The Sagamore Station is the deputy chief, shift commander, and two firefighters. And the Monument Beach Station is one lieutenant and two firefighters. A few times that we have the 10th person on duty, which runs about 10 to 15% of the time, they are put at the Buzzards Bay Station to make a four-man station. All right. So I said in the beginning of the presentation what I'm looking to do with this one person, this one person per shift. By adding this one person per shift, it'll allow me to provide 24/7 fire and EMS coverage in town. Right now, it happens frequently that all three of our ambulances are out, our stations are vacant, or it leaves one person at a station. One-person stations, one-person off fire engines, ineffective, it's dangerous, violates every NFPA standard I know of. And if we can get that one person per, one extra person per shift, by allowing me to have a 24/7 dedicated engine, that's a paramedic-level engine, I mean, they can provide the same paramedic-level care that our ambulances can provide. They can't transport, but they can start providing all the same medications, provide the first aid that any ambulance could until another ambulance could arrive. So what I'm trying to say from this is, I'm not just saying we need more personnel because we're busier. There's a tangible benefit we can see. You're going to have 24/7 coverage in this town that we don't have now. If our three ambulances are out right now, you may have one person in Buzzards Bay, one person in Pecassett, and one person in Sagamore. That's not an effective firefighting force for any type of incident. So that is the goal of getting one person per shift. With that being said, what it's not going to provide, it's not going to provide a cut-in overtime, because I will need to increase the manning to 10 people every day in order to provide that 24/7 engine coverage. At the end of the three years, we have to figure it out. We're, they're going to have to be funded, or we lose the positions. So, again, I told you I would keep this relatively quick. I wanted to open up more for questions. I know some of you have been around, who have had the Safer Grant before. Some of you are familiar with it, I figured some of you aren't, so I wanted to leave more room for questions.
Question for the Town Administrator and Chief. With some long-term financial planning, budget planning, do you see these four positions being sustainable, or do you think we're going to have to look outside the box to keep these four positions three years from now?
Sorry. So, we did talk last week, the Chief and I, with the Finance Department, and we are certainly looking at how to do that, because the last thing we want to do is bring people on for three years and then not be able to support them or sustain them. So, I can't say that we know exactly what our plan, our recommended plan would be in three years, but we've already started looking at how to make sure that when the grant is over, that we're able to pick it up.
Because what will prob, what may happen if we don't, and if we can't keep those positions going forward, is you'll have people that either retire or people who get promoted, so now you've got people who are the last ones in, are moving up in seniorities, you're not, you're end up losing bodies at the other, you know, to replace them, and so, I mean, it's, and I'm curious with the ambulance, with the ambulance revenue, with the additional calls, is that a revenue source that you could use?
One thing we did talk about that hasn't really been mentioned before is, three years ago, we enrolled in the Massachusetts Ambulance Certified Public Expenditure Program. That allows us to recuperate money from Medicaid, Medicaid patients that are in the mass health system, not from the patients specifically, but. And over the last couple of years, we've watched that number grow from about 170,000 a year. We're expecting this year maybe around just over 200,000, 225,000. As our ambulance calls increase, that number's expected to increase too, so that's something we could possibly look at. We brought that up last week.
Yes, Jared.
What about overtime? If we're going to have a mandatory, we're going to add another position, is the overtime going to be absorbable or coverable?
Well, that's one thing.
You create another position, you create more overtime, unfortunately. It's just a.
We would add another person, again, those people would have vacation, sick time, things like that, and we would also increase our manning. You know, again, so, right now, it takes two people out, whether it's vacation, sick time, training, to create overtime. If we still keep it at, with 11 people, that two people have to be out to create overtime, really shouldn't increase it. If we make it that three people have to be out, or one person has to be out, yeah, we'd increase it.
So, I'm going to just talk a little about the last time we did this, we hit eight firefighters that were on a Safer Grant, and when the grant ended, we were only able to keep four in the budget. And it was kind of an interesting scenario, because it happened halfway through the year, so when, when we, when this grant ended, it was like December, so, we were. So we were able to fund, within the budget, we were able to fund the four. The difference between laying off eight people and keeping four was exactly the same in the budget impact in that half a year. So we were able to keep four. So I do think that planning for how we're going to sustain it in the future is really important, because I think it's worth sustaining, but you need to have a plan. And since then, for a while, they did do SAFER programs where they funded it over longer period, five years or something, and it was like 100%, then 80%, then 60%, then 40%, then 20%. So by the time you got to the end, you had kind of gradually absorbed it. So I think we do have to plan at looking aside, you know, putting aside ambulance funds and putting aside other funds, so that we have a, you know, something to sustain us in a traditional program. But I think this is, I think it's a good idea. I think it brings us back to where we were when we had the prior SAFER grant, and we had 10 minimum manning. So, I mean, I think it's, it's excellent. I appreciate you guys putting it together, and I think it's well worth going forward with.
Hopefully we get it.
Get awarded it first, but we are moving forward.
Do we need a vote from the board?
But it still bears the problem that you're four people short.
From where we were back in.
From where we.
2011, correct.
30 days is a really short span for you to get that in as well, so that's a certain.
Yeah, that's why we had to move on this.
Do you see a problem?
Getting it in on time?
Better not.
It's going to happen.
If you've written it before, it makes.
It's a priority right now to get this in on time.
So do you need a motion from us to support the SAFER grant? Or is it, you're just going to apply for the grant, and we definitely, you know?
We can come back and talk to you if we get awarded. They're expecting that award notice would be, I believe, July, August. So the earliest these people would even be possibly seen, could be on the, with us training or onboarding, would be maybe February or March.
I think a motion just symbolically showing that we support this, because, you know, it's good, it's in the minute that we support it.
Fine, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we support the chief and the town administrators file another 2024 SAFER grant.
2023 SAFER.
I bet it's, it's called year 2024.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, appreciate the work. Okay, next is review of town meeting articles. Article 29, file special legislation to remove a portion of town on land from Article 97 protection in order to build a future fire station.
Come back.
Who is going to speak to this?
Peter, we'll defer to you if you want to start.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. We're here to talk about the South Side Fire Station, a project that's been in the planning stages for the last five years, but in other iterations, it's been probably close to the 40 years. Now, as of now, we are now looking at taking land out of Article 97, which is on, a property on Shore Road north of the ball field. We, we came to this realization after issuing three RFPs. One in August of '21, one in October '22, and one in February '22. One response was received each of those times. The one in August of '21 and October '22, it was the same applicant and mortal way, and then they would do their offer later on. And then the offer, the RFP offer for February 2023 was located outside the target area, therefore, we chose not to move forward with that. Overall, 19 sites have been reviewed and discussed over the years. All events we ruled out for various reasons, such as outside the target area, it's in the water resource district, it's too small, you know, and the, and the list goes on and on. We engaged in using a professional consultant to conduct a response time study to help determine where the best place to be. And in the process of doing that, this Shore Road, this Shore Road site, within a four-minute answers of the 16, about 70% of the calls are on outside the bridge. So it's, it's an area that will service the south side of the canal very well. Granted, yes, we have, you know, that we're taking some property that we have protected. However, the municipal and public safety need, I believe, trumps anything, everything else, and that's why we're moving forward with this site. In order to do this, we have to go to town meeting, you know, for, but before we do that, we have to, you know, you end up going to Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission, at some point, will review this, and it has to be unanimous consent from the Conservation Commission. If it's not unanimous consent, then it will not move forward. If it does, town meeting, because there's an interest in rail state, and these are two-thirds vote from town meeting. If the two-thirds vote is successful, then it moves on to the state legislature, where they'll file the home rule petition. Dave Vera and Steve Zarros will be the ones to shepherd that. And then there'll be that process, and then we've got to meet with Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs once we have a property that the town has signed off on, to see if it's, if they will say it's applicable and a valid swap. Why are we doing this? Monument Beach and Pecassett Fire Station are both very old. They both outlived their usefulness, they're struct, they're functionally obsolete at this point. And it just, it's, it's time for a new station to service the people of that side of the canal. And the longer that we wait, the more expensive it's going to be. So the chief is here, any audience, if there's any other questions? Through to chair.
Good.
I have actually two questions. One is, why was the northern part of the parcel, as opposed to south of the existing ball field, chosen as the, as the location?
Because the idea behind that was, there's 3.4 acres on that northern parcel. That would leave a contiguous lot of conservation land that wouldn't be interrupted by a building on the south side of the baseball field.
And on the 3.4 acres, can you refresh my memory? When we designed, when you designed the station, for the two-floor station on the Pecassett, current Pecassett site, what's the size of that portion of the Pecassett site?
We didn't actually, we didn't actually measure it in acreage, because we were fitting it in, you know, we're fitting it in between the street and the ball field. I don't, we didn't measure how much space it's.
Okay, so, and I can't, I don't see it in this map, but there, I have seen a map where it's like 3.4 acres above the, above the ball field. It's not showing all of the property above them. Is that section 3.4 acres? Or is that section more than 3.4 acres, and you're planning on living, you having a buffer zone around it?
So, page 68 in your packet has the, and it's just a sketch plan at this point?
Yeah, that's what I was looking.
Part of the, part of the conversation with the Conservation Commission is, we want to work with them, to have them help, kind of have them help us shape the exact lot lines, and so we can fit what we need for fire station purposes. But the Conservation Commission can also, you know, have input on how to best shape it so that we maintain as much habitat as possible. So that highlight, that little blue rectangle in the corner that's highlighted there is approximately 3.4 acres, which is what we're identifying as, you know, at this point, that's the area we're looking at. But the final lot lines will be after talking with the Conservation Commission.
And the reason I bring this up is that when we were placing the police station, and this is all part, this is, I'm, I'm thinking ahead to public questions, and I live right there on that road that's next contiguous to this house, it's going to impact my property. We agreed to leave a buffer zone of trees that would not cut, and to put that on. And so especially, so it, the way it's drawn here, the eastern part of the property, that, you know, there seems to be a buffer zone that's left, and I'm just curious about the northern part. I just want to make sure, because I think originally, we were looking to like for four or five acres, that at 3.4 acres, it's identified, we can still have buffer zones at the northern edge.
Yes, we will definitely, this is showing essentially a lot that would, would be subdivided out. But within that lot, the station and the driveway and the parking lot, you know, we can pull things towards the ball field.
Yeah.
So even if it's, even if it's coming out of Article 97 protection, we can still leave, we'll minimize our footprint as much as possible and leave as much natural as we can.
Okay. Peter.
Yes, as part of this process and discussion, we also talked about working with the Conservation Commission and the South Side Fire Station Committee, and the select or collaboratively, because this isn't just a fire station project, this is a community project. And by us, you know, going in before the Conservation Commission, granted, we need their unanimous approval, but just working together and getting, listening to their concerns and going, and going back and forth, I think by making this a community project, I think we'll get more buy-in, you know, by us listening and to everybody's concerns through this, because, you know, it's, you know, with the way things are going in other parts of the country, I think consensus is the only way we're going to get this done.
So I want to say that we had come to the conclusion, I want to say three or four years ago, that this was probably the best property, but we've been working for just about that amount of time to do the due diligence about, have you looked, have you really looked for other, are there other alternatives? And I think we have documented very well that we have really looked for alternatives, and when it comes to an alternative that will serve the public need for the future, and where it needs to be, this is the piece of property, and it's, it works the best, so.
And when eliminating the recreational use, you know, we made sure that ball field wasn't touched, you know, so that way, that amenity is still there for that area town.
Yeah, and I think that was good too, because people were thinking that we were going to take that ball field out.
Just to reiterate, you know, Peter spelled it out clearly, but it's almost gone on six years. Three RFPs, 19 sites. The guys are living in a trailer right now, next to the station. We just did major renovations to a 100-year-old building so we could fit the ambulances in it. This is a priority. I'm a longtime resident of Pecassett. I value the natural resources there, I'm in them all the time.
Right.
This is a lost, this was never our first choice. We spent six years trying to find, find property.
Right.
So I just wanted to close with that.
Okay. So we did have the fire station committee come to us and say that they thought that this was the best option. We asked for the documentation that's provided, about what, what are we looking for? What's been considered, what process have you used? What is your matrix? And I think they've provided that. So I would say, at this point, I would support the recommendation to.
For Article 29.
For, well, yeah, I mean, I think what we're supporting, we're not, we don't have an article yet.
Right.
We don't have an article yet, but we're support the, the recommendation to remove a portion of town on land from Article 97 protection for the future fire station.
So move.
Motion by Peter. Second by Jared, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous. So the vote on the board, on the motion will be a separate vote.
Right, right.
Right now, we're supporting moving forward with.
Yep.
With doing this action, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your diligence over years. 2009 CECL report, very high priority, South Side Fire Station, so. I've been working on this since 2009.
Right on schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Article 26, easements for the rail trail.
We have Tim Lydon on Zoom, and I will defer to him to describe this.
Okay, Tim.
Thank you, Marlene. Thank you, OJ. So this, these are the easements for Phase 1 of the rail trail. I think you guys are all pretty well-versed. This is the section from the train bridge and the canal pathway that goes down to Gray Gables Terminus at President's Road, Monumental Neck Road. There's eight easements that we'd be looking to acquire, two of them permanent, one being a drainage even on our own property, as weird as that sounds, but also for the bike path itself on commonhold property, there's no permanent even easements on private property. And the other six are temporary easements for construction and landscaping purposes. One of them might be, a good example is like, we have our core launch erosion controls that go onto some of these property during the duration of the project. So it's a small half-mile section, but it does require these easements for the right-of-way, because this white path is right up against those property lines. I guess I'll have questions with that.
Any questions from the board? Is there anything going to be in the handbook that describes like the easements? Or is it all in that, it seemed like a pretty complex motion, so, of article.
We will be putting, we will be putting a sketch plan in Appendix D, so to visually show, not an engineered plan, but Tim will have a representation, a visual representation of where the easements are.
Any questions? It's mostly temporary, so, you know, it's like.
And we do have the, we do have the real plans on file with the town clerk, but we, I, we can't put those in the book.
No, it would, when people wouldn't be able to understand them anyway, so. It's something that's conceptual, that kind of understands like what's required.
Can we have, can we have something just conceptually out in the hallway about a check-in area? So people can actually see what they may be voting on? Because it's one thing to have in the book, but I'm having a hard time reading print like this right now, so if we have a conceptual poster board out there or something, just to show, you know, what they, what they're voting on, it'll go a long way, we'll eliminate some questions that night.
Tim, can you please reach out to the moderator and ask her permission to set up an easel?
Yes, I will do that.
Thanks.
Is there anything, is, is there anything else on our website that explains the pro, that, you know, the Phase 1 project? I mean, I know we had some 25% design, and I know it's been going through different iterations. But is there anything on the town website that has more of the, where we are with this project kind of discussion?
Right, so the 25% design plan, the last plans that were accepted, we're in the middle of the 75% design review. I will put those on the webpage when they're final. I have them mostly located on my portion of the webpage.
Okay. So that's where they are, they're on the, on the engineering page. All right, awesome. Okay, any other questions for the easements? All right then. Next is Article 27, easement for police station utilities.
See what's here.
This is actually Tim again. I will say, this is something that the town did already do, but it didn't actually get all the way through and across the finish line. So we have to restart the special legislation process again. But this may sound vaguely familiar to some of you.
It did sound familiar, but did we just do temporary easements, and then we were waiting for, like? Did we just do temporary easements and then we were waiting for, like?
No, you had, you issued a license, there's a temporary license, but town meeting actually voted the easement prior to, and it got filed, but it never got through the session. So it, the session expired. But I will, I'll let Tim describe what, what the details are.
Thank you, Marley. So this is the point of why we're talking about the waterway problem, which has to bypass.
Right.
We have to go through the state process to acquire this land, D.C. and all that. We did already do this for the license agreement, so it's, it's very similar. Now we're making it permanent. The water line was installed, I think we also did fiber optic or some sort of tele, telecommunications line as well. So we had everything we need. We just didn't get through the two sessions that we required, so it almost expired. So we're just filing a new, a new motion and a new vote, and we will file that with the state as soon as that's done.
Yeah. So, timing-wise, we're coming to the end of a legislative session. So, because there's an election in November, so that, talking to our legislators about whether we wait till January, when it's a new session, or whether they can sneak it through in this one, but we're going to end up in an end of a session again, so.
They'll be here on the 30th, so you can, that way your questions, I guess, put it out there.
Yeah, we'll talk about all our special legislation that we're going to be coming to them with. Okay. So any other questions about that? Thanks, Tim. Now we're on CPC. Article 7 CPC Recreation Feasibility Study. Barry, on the phone?
Barry's on the phone.
Got your phone, your hand raised, Barry? Is that you with your hand raised? I have to get my Zoom up. I think it is.
There it is.
Madam Chairman, before we start the actual applications, I would like to just make some opening remarks.
Okay.
And that is, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, on behalf of the members of the CPC, I want to report that we are recommending that all of the projects that will be presented to you tonight go before the May 6th Annual Town Meeting. We are recommending that all funds for these projects would be coming from their current CPA reserves, funds that are on hand, except for one, and that is the project on Waterhouse Road to rehabilitate those houses, as there is still some funds on hand. As, and we felt, we, it was after July 1st, so we are recommending that that one come from future revenue. And I would also want to say that the housing applicants that are being presented tonight have been vetted by the Born Housing Partnership and Trust, and they are recommending approval of both of those projects. And lastly, for the historic applications, the Historic Commission has again vetted those projects and have provided notes to us recommending both projects. So I think some of the applicants are before you tonight. And if there are comments and questions, I will come back if necessary. Thank you.
Okay. So we're starting, who's speaking on the Recreation Feasibility Study?
That would be me.
Okay. Go for it, Liz.
Yes, so just for the viewers at home, so they can see the slides that are up, but you have them before you. Katie Matthews is also on the call on Zoom if, for any technical questions on these two projects. Just to reiterate and refamiliarize yourself with why these two articles are before you. Last year, the Select Board requested and advised the, their own advisory board, the Recreation Committee, to do a needs assessment on all facilities and actually identify the priorities and, and see what is the most important project to put funds towards, CPC funds. So they did just that, and they reported to you on January 23rd of this year, facilities report. So there's two other areas that they will be reporting in the future. One on personnel and the second will be on communication. But the first one was the top priority of facilities. It was important to the committee, the commission to, to put that for you. So two items that they identified, and as for your recommendation to move forward, which you did on January 23rd, there are two separate articles that are being requested to be placed on the warrant for this fiscal year. So the first one, Article 7 is, excuse me, the first one, Article 7 is the recreational area feasibility study. Again, this was before you earlier, so you are kind of familiar with it. But for the viewers at home, it, I don't know why my, my thing is all weird. But there are four areas that the Recreation Committee identified needing a needs assessment or a feasibility to study to see if the uses are actually adequate to take the community forward for the next 20-plus years. Those four areas, Clark Field, Cassett Chester, and Keith Field, all actually have possessed about 57% of the assets that are of highest needs within that needs assessment that is available online for your viewing pleasure. So the Recreation Committee felt actually also the importance of doing the feasibility study as a comprehensive unit, looking at all four collectively, which is very unique. It's not something that most communities do. But the born community, your Recreation Committee is advising you, look at it comprehensively. So that way, the community itself can identify where things are positioned and suiting the needs of, of the community. So that is the first thing, is looking at, these were the four areas of condition that the Recreation Committee is advising that we focus the study on. Making sure that there is a robust participation plan, focusing on ADA accessibility as well as parking to make sure these locations can adequately support people and transport, various transportation needs, not just parking, how to get people to and from from different, excuse me, various modes of transportation. And then also, including in the feasibility study, something that was a priority of the Select Board that the committee heard loud and clear was maintaining, making sure that the, there was a maintenance plan. And if we're going to put these assets and upgrade these assets, what is, what do we need to do to actually maintain it for 20 years plus? So those are the four key areas of priorities within the feasibility study that Recreation Committee had identified to be included in the procurement. So, and that is why the price is also 150,000, because you're including four areas. So we took the average of one area and times it by four, and that's what you're going to get. So it may be less, but we're asking for that total amount. The second article, or Article 8, actually, that is tentatively on the warrant, is the All Wheel Skate Park Area Redesign. This is, as you are aware, right behind this building where we're located is a repurposed tennis court that has metal ramps that are over 20 years old on it. And unfortunately, the metal has rusted so badly that the user, it's not usable anymore. So the Recreation Committee also identified this as the top priority. In the, excuse me, I don't know why that's, I'm so sorry. I don't know why my, it's going back so fast. So back in 2022, 23, the Recreation Committee worked on actually a master plan for the back area behind this building, that community building. And the fourth priority, or fourth area that was ranked in the survey was actually an all-wheel plaza of reimagining, repurposing that whole area and, and because it is an identified need for the community. So the Recreation Committee utilized an existing plan, which is also a rare thing, is not leaving the plan on the shelf, but taking it and using it and using that data collection. And they did just that. So that is where this priority has been identified and before you. So the, the square footage is actually being recommended to be expanded from 6,200 square feet to 8,400 square feet. It is also going to include a public space accessibility. It's going to be utilized for not just skateboarding, but for BMX, for rollerblading, for assistance, wheels assistance, people with any types of physical challenges will be able, who are in wheeled units can actually be able to enjoy this. And the design of it is going to have some variation. So in your packet as well are some examples that are actually taken from Tony Hawk's website, who does this very robust type of particip, engagement and helping communities actually build skate parks through a public process. So it's a very, very, very in-depth website to help us out with that. So, so yes, so this is before you. It has been before you a couple of times, but the Recreation Committee is supporting these two articles. The Capital Outlay Committee has also recommended, voted in favor of these two articles. Community Preservation Committee has also voted at their public hearing on March 18th. They appear before, these two articles appear before the Finance Committee last night and tonight for you. So, and that is it.
I hope that anything, oh, for the chair, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I hope that any, any planning for this skateboard, this all skate park will include hysteria lighting like the basketball court next, because that was one of the comments that was made a lot is, is they basketball has it, but they don't. So I guess hope that in the future, we can give, give them that amenity as well, as part of any planning.
Yes, it is, it is something that is on the list for the RFP and, which will go through also for the public participation plan. It's going to be having a very robust engagement process to see what the community actually wants and, and needs. So the lighting's going to be one component. Areas for public, for parents or grandparents to sit or for people to, it's going to become an experience is really what the committee is looking for, so.
Thank you.
I have a question about 500,000. So in the examples that are shown here?
Yes.
The lowest price is like $55 per square foot? And the highest is like $78 per square foot for the all-wheel parks? But you're saying $8,400, and that would only give, I mean, that would only give you the, the low-end price. So is that what you're thinking? Or how did they come to 500,000 to be adequate for?
The increase in.
Or are they going to do maybe 6,200? And I'm just wondering where, where the, how it's going to be, because I do the math.
Yeah, so the 500,000 actually is a comfortable number that the Recreation Committee and staff had felt that the community could be comfortable with. But it also gives us an ability as far as grants, opportunities, that you could look for matching grants. So there is availability out there, such as Tony Hawk, actually, and other types of state grants. So that is, yeah, so. But it depends on the, the design, it depends on the community need. But that is a, you know, a soft, not a soft number, but it is a comfortable number.
Okay, I'm just curious, because it says expanding that from 6,200 to 8,400, the square feet.
That's correct.
And the numbers work at 6,200, I'm not sure they work at 8,400. So I'm, just want to make sure that we are explaining exactly that. With 500,000, we would probably need additional grant funding for the 8,400 park, 8,400 square foot park. Am I correct, or am I?
Well, the 8,400 square feet is the recommended size for the size of community that we have, who also are participants with this type of sport. So again, that is a fluctuating number. It can lessen, it can greater. It also depends on construction costs, design costs, who's involved, and again, grant opportunities. The Recreation Committee is also, like I said, looking at this as creating an experience. So there might even be arts and cultural types of grants out there that could include public art that is reflective of the community and this type of activity.
I, I think this is a great project. I think, I mean, I went to a lot of those recreation meetings when they were doing it, and there's a lot of enthusiasm for, and all wheel means you can bring your bike,
Scooter, your bicycle.
Your scooter, your roller blades.
Blades, your skateboard.
I think it's, it's, I think it will be really, really great. And there was a lot of people talking about how they had to take their children to other communities to be able to do this. And I think it would be a really great addition to our community building space. So I think it's a really great project. Just wanted to make sure there was enough money.
I may, I think Sandwich has a pretty good park over by their new police station that they did.
Yep.
So that may be a reference point for us.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, Anis has one too.
They do, yeah.
Sandwich is fairly new, because they did their piece, police station, fire station, that whole thing. And then it's right behind there, so it was kind of part of that, so. I know it's fairly new.
That's good. Any other questions, comments, any other comments from Zoom on this project? I think it's a great project.
Katie, did I forget anything?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All set? Okay. Moving next is CPC Historic Preservation Roof at Hawks, at former Hoxsey School. He's talking about this. I saw someone from Anis Pals, hi.
Hi, Chris Jerome from Anis Pals. Thank you so much for having me tonight. Yes, we had asked the, to apply for the community preservation grant for $115,000 to help with the replacement of the roof on the Hoxsey. It is in dire, dire straits. Their ceilings are coming down in some of the classrooms, and in fact, some of the, some of the water this spring has leaked down from the roof into the basement. Just to support in the integrity of the building, that roof really needs to be replaced. We initially applied for a $115,000 grant, which was about half of the cost of the roof replacement. However, the CPC put in a motion to raise that to the 135,000 to cover for additional testing in case there were some contaminating materials in there and for the removal of that material.
So the request is now, the request has been approved at 135,000 by CPC, is that correct?
Correct.
Are there any other, are there any questions on this?
Yes.
Peter?
Have you started any of your fundraising campaigns for this, for this project? Because I know we gave you a couple of years to get your, you know, overall fundraising in order. I'm just curious if you started that process yet?
Yes, we've been in touch with some philanthropic leaders in the area, and we are pursuing some granting opportunities.
Okay. Is this determined to be your, like, highest priority for this renovation, I would say?
Absolutely. Yeah, when we, with the agreement with the town, we can't do any applying for permits or anything until we have a, a good portion of the funding. However, I'm going to ask that we at least put the roof on, because without that, there won't be a building in three or four years. It's, it's in really bad shape.
All right then. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks for the explanation.
Thank you for having me.
Have a good night.
Next is CPC Affordable Housing Nine Sandwich Road. I know that Mr. McKenzie and his attorney had a conflict tonight. They were at the Finance Committee last night. Is there anyone to speak to this project, Barry or Sue, to talk to this?
I would like to offer to the, to everyone exactly what our motion is as far as recommending this project. Again, we unanimously voted that we recommend approval of the application of Nine Sandwich Road LLC for $80,000 from housing, community housing reserves to be applied towards the soft costs of the design of the project. That's the motion that the CPC unanimously voted upon and accepted.
Thank you. If you have anything to add, Sue, go ahead. You can unmute. You got to unmute.
Yeah. All I wanted to say is that we had a unanimous approval at the Born Housing Partnership and Trust. We are following our housing production plan and trying to get affordable housing on the side of the, on the bridge. We, one of the ways to do it has been suggested by the state is that we, the town has to have, you know, what they call some skin in the game. And to help with the soft costs is the.
call some skin in the game. And to help with the soft costs is the beginning of that. And we would like to get started on this project to see where it goes. And, and once again, the design will let us know exactly how many units, but it looks like it might be 32 units. A quarter of them will be affordable. But because it's all rental, the state allows the town to put on their SHI was the entire number of units. So it's a, it, it could become a win-win for our town and we would like this as sort of a base to get it started.
Thank you. Any questions about this project? Okay.
Housing, housing, housing.
Yep. Okay. So, and then next is CPC Article 11, which is multiple items. I have to go to my, I think Barry dropped off.
One of, one of them is, is mine. Do you want me to do it?
Sure.
All right. Cause that, there's, there's a couple in this one. So the Bourne Affordable Housing Trust and Partnership is asking this year for 900, I mean, for $99,500. And that is to, um, for your, you know, figuratively keep the office of affordable housing open in the town of Bourne. And what we use it for is our administrative, our technical and our procedural efforts that we have, you know, things that we have to do to keep affordable housing going in Bourne. Right off the top, we, we now pay Housing Assistant Corporation $15,500 to monitor all our affordable housing in town. They, they yearly get in touch with, with all our units. If anybody's selling or, you know, remortgaging, putting on additions, they, they, they look at the deed, they do all that, that work. And it, and it's wonderful because there's so many different deed writers in our town. It's also for the accounting, the legal. It's for our technical help with our repair program. We have somebody that'll come and do specs for us and then come and, and do the approval at the end and the inspection to make sure everything's been done right. It, it helps us pay for and contribute to some of the lotteries for any of the units that we may have come before us that need, need to be granted for homes. And, and we do the proper legal lotteries for the state. So it's basically supplies, equipment, everything administrative, technical and procedural that we need.
Okay.
Questions? I, I don't want to make it too short, but I don't want to, I think everyone knows what it was for.
All right. So the other items on this are Item A is the Katamit Schoolhouse Preservation Group. Katamit School, fumigation, historic preservation, 29,000 from historic preservation reserves. Then the other items on this are?
There. For the schoolhouse?
Yes.
Yeah. This is, should I go now?
Sure. Identify yourself and you may speak.
Yeah, this is, this is Ben Joyce and I've been on the committee for the schoolhouse for a long time. And we're requesting 29,000 for fumigation of the schoolhouse where we have a powder post beetle problem. Being an old building, all old buildings have powder post beetle problems, pretty much. And we noticed it a long time ago with the schoolhouse, which is sort of a typical situation. But in the last three years, the beetles apparently have been traveling vertically up and they leave the trailings and the sawdust around the windows and around the floors. And we tried to do the job cheaply by having a, um, a professional exterminator spray, which I believe was boric acid. And it, it really didn't work. The, the problem is the, you can't get it in, you can't get the boric acid inside the walls. You have to go through the plaster and the wood and then it's around the windows. So access to the wood in, within the walls is kind of impossible. And so they recommended getting someone who can fumigate, assuming that you can find someone. And we did. And so they would tent the building and fumigate the schoolhouse completely. And I think that would, that would, I know, we know that that would rid the problem for, for many decades. And so this is what we're requesting.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? No, it sounds like a good plan.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for that explanation. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The other items in Article 11 are the transfer to reserves.
Now, we had the Bourne Housing Authority for the, the two remaining units over at Handicap on Waterhouse Road. And Kara, the director is online.
All right, Kara.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Kara Velasco Garcia is at the Director at Bourne Housing Authority. I am new out there, but I have been with the authority for about 12 years. I know we've come in the past for funds to rehab the exterior over at 89 Waterhouse Road, which is our handicap housing, affordable housing. We were able to renovate six of the buildings on the exterior, new siding, trim, gutters and doors. That project has been now completed. We are currently asking for 200,000 from the, from the CPA to allow us to start the work over at our family units, which is directly across the street on Waterhouse Road. We have buildings 79 and 81 are going to start construction within 30 days with funding that was secured from EOHLC, the Community Preservation, and a HLLAP that we applied for. Not only will the tenants enjoy the buildings, but the curb appeal will improve and the maintenance, maintain the affordable housing here in Bourne. That is my presentation.
Thank you.
For the chair?
Yes.
The reason why you're seeing these applications through CPC is the state, through their formula, only gives you so much money per year for the state properties and it's never enough. And the, the town of Bourne has state properties with all but the exception of Rowan Finney Place, which is a federal property. And so you can see the difference in, you know, in, in how the state prioritizes versus what the federal government does. And in order to offset the diff, you know, the, the difference that the state cannot provide, we have to use community preservation on the state properties to get, fix what's out there in, on our communities. So it's, granted, it's, you know, it's, it's not coming, it's coming from us, but I think it's a great use of the money that we have available.
Good.
Maintains our housing.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you. It looks like a good project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the next is going from reserves, putting in the anticipated revenue into the, into the various reserves. And then Article 12 is the administrative budget.
Yes, this is the reoccurring article. There's a lot under the Community Preservation Act, 24B, Section 6, which allows up to 5% of the annual revenues for the county pres, uh, Community Community Preservation Fund for administrative and operating expenses of the committee. We are again requesting the same amount that we have in numerous years, $75,000 and for that most purposes. And as you know, this is a cause of at the end of the fiscal year, all the unexpended balance and it goes right back into the Community Preservation Fund. So again, the CPC is recommending and requesting $75,000, same we've had for our numerous years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. So, and thank you very much CPC Committee. Good projects. And I appreciate you coming in and explaining them to us. Next item is Article 20, authorized BNO licenses.
This is a housekeeping item. We had a, received an app, the administration office received an application for a BNO license from a local church. And we wanted to make sure that we were doing the process correctly. And we found out that the town actually, back in 1979, did not, did not approve or authorize BNO being conducted in our community. So this has to go before the town meeting. Luckily, it doesn't have to go before election because in 1979, it did have to go before a town election. But the laws have changed that now it just requires a town meeting vote. So this is just a housekeeping item for the town to authorize BNO slash bingo to occur. And within the parameters of Chapter, Section, Chapter 10, Section 38, which requires it to be a nonprofit and established within five years and all of the other parameters of the.
Within five years or more than five years?
More than five years. Five years or more.
Okay.
Of being established in the community and has to follow the rules. And the application would go before the select board to be signed off and then it's sent up to the lottery commission. But you do not have the authorization right now to sign that application. And the administration office is asking that this be placed on the warrant. So.
I'm just curious, in 1979, was there some change that required everyone to authorize it or?
Yes. So in 1975, it, it did occur. There was a vote. There was an election in 1975. It was recorded. But the mass general law actually was written that on the fourth year in 1979, everybody had to reauthorize. Most towns did. I have some examples. Littleton and other communities, Chatham did too. But, but we did not do that. And we just kept issuing them.
Did we not ask or did we not?
We did not put it on the ballot, on the ballot.
Which were you were, did we go to town meeting and then not put it on the ballot?
No, it did not actually go anywhere.
Nobody asked. We just kept.
Nobody asked. Continue. You, nobody looked into it to, to, or remember that it needed to go before it. So again, this is just a housekeeping item so that we, everybody is, is doing.
So we have issued some licenses, but we're getting, okay.
We've stopped.
Unauthorized.
Yeah, that's all.
All right. Well, so that's, thank you for that great explanation about why we need to vote this because.
It was another good research project that the administration office dove deep into those archives in the basement.
What happened back in 1975?
Those big walls. Half lips and all, yeah.
Well, I think this is a, a good one to pass. So like, that sounds good. All right. Any other questions from the board or Zoom land? All right. Thanks for the explanation. All right. That, that's it for our review of town meeting articles this evening. I just, I want to go back to Article 29 just for a second. Right now, Article 29 is listed as in the annual town meeting. It actually came probably in a timeframe that would make it eligible for the special. And it's not really a essential article for corporate function. So my preference would be to have it in the special just so we make sure we get it taken care of.
Fine.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Okay.
It will be number two on the special.
Awesome. Thank you. Town administrators report.
I just have a brief one tonight. Firstly, the landfill has diverted 3.83 tons of food waste so far in 2024.
So far in 2024?
Yes. So far in 2024.
I'm just saying that because I met with the eighth graders in the civics and I gave them the 2.54 and I thought that was since the beginning. I didn't realize it was since then. I'm going to have to write them a little note and tell them.
Yeah. So we're, we're watching it. We restarted in January.
Okay.
So this is, this is for the calendar year. But they are really gaining, gaining, their program is gaining speed.
So are there more people, is it more people bringing it, more people participating? So that, is that, or is it just?
They've also expanded it in all of the schools. So it will drop off in the summer.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Two short updates about the canal bridges. Tonight, April 2nd, the Bourne Bridge will have one lane closed in each direction while new curb is installed. The lanes will be open in the morning. Mast Dot will be holding a virtual public information meeting on the bridge replacement project on April 25th at 6:00 PM. Interested participants should register on Mast Dot's website in order to receive a Zoom link for that meeting. Tomorrow, we will update the town of Bourne's website to remove the notice about the night work lane closures and will replace it with notice about the April 25th meeting. So people can, can link there tomorrow. The DPW is hard at work getting the baseball fields ready for opening day. We have witnessed significant infield damage caused by dogs at Pecasset and the town is repairing that. We have removed the gates from that field as of yesterday, April 1st. We are in the.
They were there today. I noticed dogs there today.
We are in the process of making signs and those will be posted shortly. We are also evaluating removing the gates at Keith and Clark Fields if necessary. It is our intention to reinstall the gates at the end of the season. The police department is making good progress with their body worn camera system. There is now a small group of officers who are participating in the deployment testing team. Residents may see the cameras and clips being worn on their uniforms. The chief of police is available to explain the program to the board at your convenience. That's it for tonight.
Thank you. I'm very excited. Okay. Next item is consent agenda. Going to split this into actually two, two motions. One is Item A, approve request of police department to declare surplus and dispose police cruisers. And C is accept donation to library from the Cape Cod Foundation. We have a motion on A and C, please.
Motion to approve. Second. Items A and C and the consent agenda.
Thank you. Any discussion? Do you know, in your favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I pose objections? It's unanimous. Next is approval of the special events listed on the attachment. To have a motion to approve the special events as presented, subject to all conditions noted in the comments.
So move.
Seconded.
Motion by Anne Marie, seconded by Jared. Is there any further discussion?
Where's that? Cause I guess.
It's.
It was an additional.
It's an additional.
It was the third.
It's the third piece of the.
It was a third. It was a separate.
It was the third attachment in our packet. There were three attachments. It was the last attachment.
You want the last?
The PM Mass I would like to discuss further.
Okay.
We just want to make sure that.
Yeah, go ahead. Discuss.
Make sure that the, out in Taylor's Point, that the no parking signs are out there for PM Mass, that we've had a working relationship over the years whereby having the no parking within the neighborhood, it's been easier to get, it's been easier for the neighbors and public safety to get around. Because if, if you don't have no parking down there, they're taking over the whole neighborhood. And it gets to a point where they're parking on both sides of the street and ambulance or a fire truck can't, cannot get down those roads. And that's why we.
Recent years, it's been good though.
Well, we, every, but we just want to make sure. Cause last year there was a glitch and it was forgotten. It was, that was more with MS, which I don't see on here. But it's something of, but multiple sclerosis.
What? Is some not PM Mass?
No, multiple sclerosis is usually energy.
Multiple sclerosis is not on here.
Best buddies.
But no, but with PM Mass, at least with PM Mass, it's on for now, since that's on the agenda. I just want to make sure that it's on the record that there's no parking on Taylor's Point per the, per the direction of the police chief and. on Taylor's Point per the, per the direction of the police chief in the department.
If that's in the comments from the PD.
I just want it--
So do we need a motion? Is it okay if it's just noted in your comments, in the minutes as opposed to in the motion? Or do you want the motion adjusted?
Well, have the motion reflected as well. Just sort of shows the way the board, because if I'm just talking about it and we don't have a vote, I just want to make sure.
Do we think it's in the comments?
It's not in the comments--
No.
For public safety, no.
Okay. Okay, so you want to, let's--
May not be on that one.
Amend the motion. Peter, you want to propose an amendment to add to the motion? No parking and that no parking signs are out for, on, are out on Taylor's Point for PM Mass challenge?
Yes, for, yes, for Saturday, for--
For the event.
For the event on the first Saturday of the month, whatever the day the event is.
Well, it says 8:00 to 8:04.
That's where one of them had comments from the PD.
There are comments about parking in unrestricted areas, but it's not specific about Taylor's Point. So we'll make sure that that is passed along to the police.
Yeah, it's 3:00 and 4:00 is a Saturday and a Sunday and it's just--
There has been an issue for public safety.
Yeah. So if there's too much parking, the ambulances can't get through it, so they can't, so.
Part of my motion is to just authorize no parking on Taylor's Point for the weekend of April 3rd and the 4th.
Maybe staff.
August, August 3rd and August, and the morning of August 4th.
August 3rd.
And the morning of August 4th.
They'll be gone by 9:00 AM that day.
Okay.
Maybe staff could reach out to them.
So is there a second to Peter's amendment?
Seconded.
So motion by Peter and second by Jared to amend the motion to add and that no parking signs are out on Taylor's Point for PM Mass challenge for August 3rd and the morning of August 4th. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Back to the main motion with the amendment. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you.
And then in the future, if we can ask, can we look into seeing when the, if multiple MDMS society has submitted their application for this year? To make sure that we have that one.
Okay. So it being 8:30, I will note our town administrator--
Thank you.
Who will be excused from the remainder of the meeting, but she will be--
I will be joining you--
Joining via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Things happen. Okay. So review, motions for town meeting articles, develop initial recommendations, assign articles to board members. There's a lot of articles. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process. So back when the finance committee would make the presentation, make the motions and make the presentation of articles, each person who was presenting an article was prepared to speak a couple minutes to the article. And there's some articles where it's sort of okay just to do the yes vote means and the no vote means. But there's a lot of articles when you really need to give an explanation. And giving an explanation can be simple, but it really helps people understand what they're voting on. So I just wanted to see if people were okay with adding that responsibility to the articles that people decide to do.
I think it's just personal preference, you know, if it, you know, if the yes or no is self-explanatory is one thing, but it's up to the individual person as, you know, when they present the article.
I kind of disagree. I think if you don't want to make an added presentation, then don't take the article. And that we should know, we should agree as a board, we should get our thing. And because I didn't go through it, not tonight, but like, once we approve the articles, to say, all right, so and so's doing this and who agrees aboard. We need more explanation or we don't, so that we're, we're prepared. Because I think, and we got some comments from this about, at the last meeting, from the, from people that some more explanation on some of the articles would have been helpful. And so I just want us to be, I want it to be smooth.
Yes, some, some that is needed, sure.
So I think as part of your decision on which articles you would like to do, kind of think about whether or not additional is-- And I, I think I did send out like a warrant tracker. I'm going to update that, but--
Okay.
If, maybe, maybe what people can do is if they have interest in doing particular articles, just send to me so I can start getting it organized. These are the ones I'd like to do. And if there's, if it all works out that they're all spread out, well, I have them all spread out. And if there's multiple people interested in certain articles, we can discuss that next week. But I'd like to get that all kind of nailed down next week in terms of what, who's going to do what articles. Is there anything else to discuss about this? It's kind of open ended, but, okay. Moving right along. Policy. Third reading for layout and accepted of private ways for petitions. Mr. Leyden.
MJ, I'm the chair, I'm the chairman of the board. So this is our third reading for the acceptance of private ways. You know, we've really done a good job, I thought, in the sub-policy committee meeting, hatching out, going through the process itself to really, you know, protect applicants, the residents for the petitioners, and also for the town to make sure we're getting what we're asking for. A couple key changes I really wanted to highlight. When we go through this process, I mean, we're looking for 75% acceptance of a group, which means there's some people that aren't into that. And we were making sure that we, that if people knew early what the cost would be, because it all hinges upon the cost, that we would really have buy-in at that time. So we will have that buy-in around September or October, early on in the process before we get going. And then to also understand the role of the board here in this petition, whereas if there isn't 75%, and say, somebody applies and there's 75% signatures, but at some point, names come off, which we will allow for, we will allow for a recalculation of the names because therefore, if you don't have 75%, you do not move forward. They could come back to this board and request a forfeit's vote, which is, you know, up to you. So those were two changes that we really wanted to make sure that people understood in this policy. I think it got lengthy compared to what we started with, but I really feel confident that the town is requesting documentation that makes the acceptance valid and lawful. We did also institute that early on in the process, that town council reviews the documents that are handed in, not for a final review, because there was a final review around town meeting time, and then we go to file the documents after town meeting, but also along the way to make sure that there isn't anything that could stop us from taking these, this property, these ways. So I guess with that, I'll put that back to you and ask any questions from the board.
Does anybody have any questions for Tim?
No.
Third reading.
I read through it again today. It's, I think it's reading pretty clearly. And I just want to make sure, when we do the notification of layout, public meeting, is that the meeting, is that the meeting where the final vote of 75% or forfeits happens? And it's after they, they know how much it's going to cost?
They will know how much it's going to cost then. And that's actually the estimated number, which will come in higher than the final number. So--
Right.
I call it the sticker shot. It is the absolute highest that they would see.
Okay. I think the process is pretty clear. I mean, I think it lays it out so people know what they have to do. I will be amazed after our first round if we don't have some changes, but we might or we might not. But we've had the experience with that where you just write it all down and then you figure out what you need to fix. So is there anyone with questions here on Zoom? There's Susie Perry, you want to speak?
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Susie Perry from Pecassett Woods Homeowners Association. I just have a couple of quick questions for you, if that's okay.
Yep.
In pertaining to the comments that Tim Leyden just made, my question was about the possible betterment. Is it, as I'm reading through everything, it sounds like you're working on the premise that betterments will be required, but is there, if I'm understanding correctly, there is a path forward if there's no real betterment that's needed. It might just be some fixes, maybe a drain or something that needs shored up. So that's my first question. Do you want to, do you want me to--
What you do, I'm running out of time, Tim. So if they don't need like a full paving and full everything, if it's in really good shape, there's only a couple minor things, they would just be charged a betterment based on whatever work has to be done, right?
To me, right now, I believe that there could be a case there because there are costs that are absorbed by the town, whether they're legal or engineering or staff related on my, or the DPW directors' time. I think there is an avenue there, but I, you know, most roads that we would do that for would be brand new and fresh, freshly developed.
Okay. So just, just so I'm understanding correctly, then, that you are working from the premise that you may actually ask us to do some sort of betterment?
Yes.
Correct. Because there is a standard that we do need to make sure and we do have to have assurances. And the policy does outline those assurances that we would need to have during the petitions, filing of the petition.
Okay. That's, that answers my first question. My next question is just pertaining to the, I believe it was, the meets and bounds legal description. Would we need to, when we supply that, is that something where we would actually pay a civil engineering company to come in and establish those meets and bounds? Or is that something that is on file at the town that we can access?
That may be on file with the town. Like existing road layouts would be something we would reference. And there's a narrative that we would create that we would also do for an acceptance of a town road. So the narrative would be the new document and there may be a possibility that we would include that former plan as an attachment.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question is, when do you anticipate finalizing and having the petition uploaded to, or supplied so that we can get a copy of it, so that we may proceed and get it to by the July 1st deadline?
May I defer to the board? Madam Chair?
Well, let's, let's assume that we vote, this is our third reading. Let's assume we, we say, we're good to go. We're going to vote it. We have a policy. Do you have, have you started working on the form that you'll be using for the application? Is it similar to what you did before? Or--
I mean, that could be, that could be done in the course in a very, a very near timeline.
Yeah.
Till end of the month?
Thank you.
So maybe the end of the month. Tim?
I think that's very safe to say.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay. And I just want you to know that there are some, so in the petition process, some of the documentation that's required for, you know, the meets and bounds and the copies of layout plans, that is the expense of the petitioners. So that is something that petitioners are going to have to pay.
I'm sorry. Can you say that again? I missed that.
So these things that are required, the meets and bounds description and the layout plans, those, and the test holes that have to be done, those are things that the petitioners have to pay in order to have a completed application. So there will be some upfront costs, you know.
Okay, great. I'll be sure to note that to the association when we go through the process and allocate money and have that done. Thank you so much.
And I do think that it's tried to be communicated here, that if you're interested in going through this process, that, you know, really sitting down and meeting with the engineering department, i.e. Tim, just to, just to walk through the process. So you're, you're, he's willing to help you as you go through the process. So the important thing was getting the process approved by the board.
Getting a policy. Having a policy.
Now that we have a policy, you're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to approve the third reading of this policy and to move it to adoption.
Second. Motion to prove the policy is presented in the third reading and adopt--
And to adopt.
And to adopt on April 2nd, 2024.
Yes.
Is any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The opposed abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Tim.
All right. We'll talk about this again in September.
When we get petitions.
George will be a happy man.
We'll have one.
Get at least one on the call, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
George will be a happy man. We're moving forward with this. Finally getting some of these roads accepted.
Next item, I did put on discussing the annual goals for the town administrator because this was a long agenda and we have been here since 6:30 and she had, was going to have to leave at 8:30. So we'll do it next week. Next is select board comments in preparation for the Cape Cod Bridges Program Advisory Group Meeting, April 9th, 2024. So we have two representatives on that advisory committee. And I just put this on an agenda, as an agenda item, in case any select board members had any comments or questions they wanted our representatives to ask at that meeting so we could have an opportunity in a public meeting to discuss this. I want to say myself, and I would like it communicated to Mast Dot, that I think that there's been an improvement in the communication in general on the bridges program and everything else. And other members of the board haven't been on the weekly meetings, the bi-weekly meetings that are happening on the Bourne Bridge Rotary Project. But I think there've been, it's been good communication. I don't say too much, but it's a good opportunity for the contractor and public safety and everybody to kind of say, we're going to need to know about this when it's going to happen. So I think there's, I think they're making an effort for better communication. I want to express that. Anything else? Anybody else have something?
If it changes between now and next Tuesday, just email and let us know. Because Anne Marie, I'm assuming Anne Marie and I--
Not the agenda yet.
You see, that's, that is kind of, that is the thing, that it would be helpful to have the agenda for the meeting when the meeting is announced, so that you can say to your board, you know, we're going to be talking about access or utilities or, you know, internet or whatever it is, bypass or, you know, so that they, that you have an opportunity. But the other thing is, the way that they seem to be doing these now is having the stakeholder meeting and then having the public presentation meeting on the 25th. So this is kind of the opportunity to say, this is the things that they're going to be looking for feedback on. And then for that public hearing, we can be more informed.
Yeah. Gareth's been on, been out, but he's back tomorrow. So if anybody didn't email in saying, like, I know I sent mine, I got an automatic reply saying that I'll be out. But if there's anything, guess what Anne Marie or I normally sure said. John York is up in the corner.
Oh, John. I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just have a few comments on the upcoming stakeholder meeting. And this is really for you to discuss your comments, but I'll put them out there because I think it would be nice if the town helps represent the concerns of its citizens. My biggest concern with the stakeholder meetings is what-- My biggest concern with the stakeholder meetings is what MJ was talking about, that there's, they don't give the town officials who are on that committee enough time to put together meaningful response to the agenda items, because they don't provide an agenda far ahead. What I see is an opportunity, though, it's actually been six months or seven months since there was a stakeholder meeting, they're supposed to be quarterly. I would suggest that this meeting is going to be a lot of presentation, and they're not going to really have time to get much meaningful input back. There's been a lot of water over the dam, we've got two bridge projects separately instead of pulled together, and all sorts of other things. So this meeting seems like it's going to be a lot of information to you. I think what they should do is hold another meeting three months away, or even less, and have that one be for the response to what they put out in this meeting. So if you want to voice that thought to Mass DOT, in other words, the agenda items be repeated at the next meeting, but it would be an opportunity for town boards to go back and eat and deliberate, talk to the public, and then make meaningful comments. I think that would be a good format. This is just a suggestion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're all set, moving on to our slipboard minutes.
Most into approved minutes of October 18th, 2022. Yeah.
So I had a question from someone about how the determining of the spending of the opioid money was, how, how opioid money was spent, and I was like, oh, we didn't intend it, we had a presentation about that. And I went back, and they, those minutes weren't on the, they were like, alone minutes that weren't there, so. I don't think Anne Marie was on the board, but the rest of us were, so.
I'll second.
All right, I'll make a motion, you made, you made a motion to approve, right, Peter? And then Melissa, second. Any further, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I'll abstain.
401, Anne Marie abstains.
In most into approved minutes of 3:12, 2024.
Second.
Motion be Peter, second by Melissa. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Committee reports, any committee reports? I feel like I had a lot of meetings last night, last week, but it's okay. Correspondence.
Select board correspondence for April 2nd, 2024. Item A, DEP letter referencing Old K Range Munitions Response Area. B, DEP letter referencing feasibility study Otis Gun Club Munitions Response Area. C, Seven Gainesboro Drive Waterways Regulation License. D, Barnstable County Sheriff's Office, year in review 2023. E, Plymouth County Parking Quarterly. F, Upper Cape Tech Fiscal Year 25 Budget. G, Upper Cape Tech, February 8th, 2024 Committee Minutes. And H, Xfinity Channel Changes.
Everyone all set with any questions for agenda items on that? Okay. Next is future agenda items.
Yes, there was something that was brought to my attention, this goes back to probably over a year ago now, when I was chair, and it was for the renaming of Perry Ave, one portion of it.
Yeah, it's all coming on the agenda, that felt, we didn't get response, but it's, we have it on a future agenda.
I just want to make sure it was, is there, because-
Yeah, I think it's, we had, we posted it, we had to do a public hearing, and it, which I, I mean, we had to do a newspaper notice, which I think was in maybe last, yeah, it's in process.
All right, all right. Look, that was spoken to, asked about, and I want to be sure that-
Yeah, there were some, like, emails that didn't get, emails didn't get a response, but we've been diligent following, on following up, and now we have it coming.
All right, good, thank you.
Next meeting dates, next week, April 9th, April 16th, it's a Tuesday, and April 30th is slipboard with legislative, and I think April 17th is the moderator's meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Peter to adjourn. Second by Anne Marie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? It's unanimous. Aye.